All right, I want to call this Greenville County Council Regular Meeting to order. And if you would, please bow with me so we can pray. Dear Lord, thank you so much for another day in Greenville County. Thank you for giving us opportunity to gather together, do the people's work, pray that you be with this meeting, be with everyone that has attended, especially in their travels back home. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes.
We have approval of the minutes from our February 18th meeting.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. And next, I joked with them ahead of time and said that reading to a literacy association is kind of stressful, but if they could join me right up here towards the podium real quick for a proclamation. Whereas Greenville Literacy Association, also known as GLA, was founded in 1965 by a group of dedicated volunteers who recognized the need for adult literacy education in Greenville County. Their mission is to increase the literacy and employability of adult learners so they can grow and thrive through education, leading them to an improved quality of life. Over the past 60 years, GLA has remained steadfast in its mission to provide high-quality, accessible adult education services, able to adapt to the changing workforce and community needs. And whereas GLA provides adult basic education, GED preparation, English as a second language in college and career navigation programs, GLA also leads workplace literacy and ESL in the workplace initiatives partnering with local employers to enhance workforce skills. In addition to its core educational services, GLA operates the annual Really Good, Really Big, Really Cheap Book Sale, a signature community fundraising event that supports adult education programs. And whereas GLA serves hundreds of adult learners each year, helping them gain the skills necessary to achieve economic mobility, self-sufficiency, workforce advancement, and personal growth. Through partnerships with Greenville Technical College, Apprenticeship Carolina, local businesses, funders, and workforce development organizations, GLA creates pathways for adults to pursue higher education and credential attainment. The organization's efforts contribute to reducing educational barriers, improving workforce readiness, and fostering a more literate and skilled community. And whereas as Greenville Literacy Association celebrates its 60th anniversary, the community recognizes its decades of dedication of education, workforce development, and literacy advancement. GLA's success is built on the support of volunteers, educators, donors, and community partners who have been instrumental in changing lives through learning. Now therefore, Greenville County Council does hereby recognize the continued efforts of Greenville Literacy Association proclaiming their enduring legacy, celebrating their profound impact, and honoring their commitment to lifelong learning, workforce development, and community advancement in Greenville County for the past 60 years. If you would, join me in congratulating the Greenville Literacy Association. Looks like we have four speakers tonight. The first will be, I'm going to try to get this right, I had some help even, but Gary Walitis? Did I get it?
They gave you good notes on that.
And the topic is the opposition to annex by TR Paris Mountain. If you just give us your name and address.
Sure. Gary Walitis, 233900. My wife and I live, have lived here for 20 years, raising our family. We both own businesses. And, but I've lived in a lot of places, Detroit, Atlanta, Houston, Austin, Charlotte, LA, Seattle. And every time I've had a stop, I always wonder and ask myself, what makes this place special? Lot of reasons, but at the end of the day, it's always about the communities and it's about the neighborhoods. And today, we all know, we don't have to talk about, but here in Greenville, we have a wonderful lifestyle here. Just, but at the end of the day, it's about the people, the communities, and the neighborhoods. We all love Greenville. Now, as a businessman, I embrace capitalism. I also understand property rights. So I understand the struggle that we all face in balancing progress. And all these stops, I've witnessed good, I've seen great, and I've seen some really poor planning. And at the end of the day, some of these places I've lived, they are just mere shells of what they used to be. And it's sad. In the past few years, I've seen the beginning of a decay that is just slowly chipping away at the quality of life that we have here in Greenville. I feel we've sold Greenville out at below wholesale prices. We've allowed developers to build many soulless projects. And not only do they not add, but they actually detract from the quality of life that we have here. But we need to demand creativity, innovation, and only the highest quality builds in our community. And I know we can do that. But today, that was all sounded negative, but I'm really upbeat today. And I wanted to thank this council for making the decision on the resolution and considering taking the stand against this floated annexation with the Paris Mountain parcels. I think it's absolutely incumbent upon this council to protect our resources, our people, our communities, the bikers, the runners, and I dare say, the community of Travelers Rest. And I see a passion here in this council, and I think this council is a great council so far this year, but I think as doctors say, do no harm, I think that this council needs to employ a litmus test and say, hey, do our actions enhance or protect the quality of life for our citizens? And that's just going to rule the day. And remember, private equity entrepreneurs, they will always find a way to make their dreams come true. But we have to hold them to exacting standards, standards that we as a community say, this is what we demand, and we demand nothing less than this. So I ask also too, that you take a look at the UDO or LDR, however you want to look at it. It's not rocket science. Let's make it right. And I think that's the challenge. And I'd like you guys to be leaders and partner with all the folks that are involved with making and progressing our county forward. I believe I speak for a supermajority to say, hey, listen, if you do what's right, we'll support you. So again, I thank you guys for the Paris Mountain stand and that EDS designation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walitis. Next up, we have Sarah Timmons, and the topic is the TR, the opposition to annexation by TR.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Timmons. I live at 25 Palladio Drive in Greenville, South Carolina. And first off, I just want to take the time to thank you guys. I don't know if y'all get enough thanks, but I very much appreciate your public service. I know that what you do is difficult and hard, and we are very grateful that you sit in the seat that you do, and you represent our interests here in Greenville, which, as you can see with how fast it's growing, is becoming just an absolute gem in the United States. And so with that said, I just wanted to thank you and speak up in support of your resolution opposing the annexation and the hotel on Paris Mountain. I'm also an attorney, and I represent the Altamont Road Safety Association and have the pleasure of working with all of these individuals who show up in the red shirts. It has been an absolute pleasure working with them and representing them. And I would say, you know, while the red shirts are bright, this is like the only thing I own that's red in my closet, it is an absolute pleasure meeting people and understanding who these people are and what they care about. There are all kinds of people, doctors, engineers, lawyers, farmers, children. Anywhere I go, whenever I'm wearing the shirt, people come up and they say, what is this about? And I tell them about the hotel and annexation. And if they don't know, they're like horrified, no, this will ruin the mountain. And so the fact that you guys have the courage to do this resolution and outline the reasons why this is bad is kudos to you. I'm very thankful that you guys are standing there and willing to take a stand because I think this resolution very succinctly articulates the reasons why this development should not happen and why the annexation should not happen. Road safety concerns, always top of mind. The idea that a couple hundred cars would be dumped onto Altamont Road is absolutely terrifying. That, a couple weeks ago, a car flipped there. It's scary. Obviously, the environment. This development would result in millions of gallons of water running down the mountain into the streams that feed the Reedy River. On top of that, the annexation alone, I don't think that when Furman annexed their property, they ever conceived that they would be the gateway for the annexation and development of Paris Mountain. If this annexation is allowed to happen, it will open the doorway for all developers who have been eyeing this pristine landscape and property to realize that this is the next frontier in terms of the high-value development. So the importance of trying to draw the City of Travelers Rest's attention to the reasons why the majority of us here in Greenville County do not want this is incredibly important. And we appreciate you taking a stand on behalf of all of us to let them know why this is bad. You're not telling them what to do, but you're drawing their attention to it. And I hope, given how difficult it has been to meet with some of them, that they take what you have to say to heart because it matters. You're right. Absolutely, all the reasons in there are absolutely correct. And the most important one of all is that if this starts to happen, it will send a message that Paris Mountain is open for business, and it will destroy what makes Greenville our identity very special. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. I figured I'd wait until the timer stopped this time, because last time I told Ms. Pazin that her time was already up before she started. Next on the list is Ms. Audrey Pazin, and the topic is opposition to annexation by TR.
I want you always to be hopeful. Don't interrupt my time. I have a point of information. I had signed up for two topics, and I was told I have three minutes for the two topics. Is that true?
Yes.
Well, then I'll say thank you for the broadcast ordinance. I love it. And please get it uploaded much more quickly than 30 days. It's useful if it's timely. 30 days, whatever you're working on, which moves at the speed of light, will be over, and so public input won't be available. Let me move to the annexation question, and thank you for the resolution. Councilman Fant, thank you for joining in that resolution. Councilman Mitchell, I hope you will join. I was pleased to see Councilman Mitchell at the event about the mountain. He is interested in what's happening and in doing his duty, and I encourage you. Let me say more about the annexation. I presume it will not go forward, but I want you to be ready because as an attorney, I think about Plan B, C, and D. And it is a litigation strategy. I sent Mr. Antley a very brief email a few weeks ago about this, but I don't want you to capitulate. I don't want you to concede anything about your legal standing to challenge this thing if the annexation does proceed. There are at least three plausible issues to raise. They are anticipatory nuisance, public trust, and spot zoning. And they are all litigation-worthy. I'll say this also, and you must look past the annexation statute. If all you read is the annexation statute, let's all get buried right now. It's over. But we have the Enabling Act, and it was enacted after the annexation statute. And that's very meaningful to a court. And it tells us we should have a comprehensive plan. Now, that comprehensive plan's not supposed to be a nullity, but annexation can make it a nullity, which gives you a very strong case to bring. And I'll say one other thing. You may not want to bring the case, but a plaintiff who's injured might bring it and join you involuntarily. You might get dragged in anyway. So initiate good litigation if you have to, and get ready for that. I'll say this also, ESD PM has needed a comprehensive plan forever. I've been litigating issues there since about 2006. An urban ribbon is a perfect solution to exactly what Attorney Timmons told you about, the slippery slope of future development up that mountain. Because if that hotel is an extra hotel, there will be contingency to a lot more land on that mountain, and anybody who feels like it will say, oops, selling to a developer. Who cares? You can protect that now, and I hope that you will. I will be a voice for that because Paris Mountain deserves your protection. And I live there at 136 Old Dr. Mount Ridge Road, kind of close to the top. Thank you for listening. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pazin. I hope Ms. Pazin's feeling better because she didn't use all of her time, so I'm making sure. All right, next on the list, we have Emily Poole, and the topic is as well, opposition to annexation by TR.
Good evening. My name is Emily Poole, and I live at 26 Tyrion Drive in Greenville. I'm an attorney with the South Carolina Environmental Law Project, and our mission is to use legal expertise to protect our state's special places like Paris Mountain, landmarks that are essential to the fabric of our communities. This project, the Altamont Inn Project, would have grave impacts upon the precious ecological haven found on the mountain, including loss of crucial habitat and wildlife and other species, environmental degradation, and increased erosion and sediment runoff down the mountain's slopes. Further, the Inn at Altamont Project raises a number of public safety concerns by bringing more traffic and more people to already overburdened infrastructure. Importantly, the developer is looking to circumvent the protections afforded to Paris Mountain through Greenville County zoning ordinance by applying for annexation into the City of Travelers Rest. For decades, Greenville County has recognized Paris Mountain as an environmentally sensitive district and has restricted what kind of development can occur. Annexation of these parcels into Travelers Rest would fly in the face of the environmental protections currently in place on Paris Mountain, and it would open the door for even more of the mountain to be taken over by ill-sighted development projects. Of course, the resolution highlights these same concerns. I've highlighted all the parts that mention the environment and the annexation and how this is just a domino effect that could really hurt a very environmentally precious place. So I do also want to thank you for taking the time to do this resolution. I know resolutions sometimes are spoken of with limited legal effect, but I want to tell you what your resolution has done. First, your resolution has given a voice to so many people who are worried that their concerns are not being heard by the City of Travelers Rest. Second, your resolution has given us education, an education and advocacy tool with lots of ready talking points to use when this annexation and development are submitted to the City of Travelers Rest. And finally, your resolution has shown a government responsiveness that matches the dire situation at hand. If we don't speak up for Paris Mountain, we will seal its fate. Once these precious places are gone, they're gone forever. So thank you so much for the resolution. I hope you all support it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next, we'll go to resolutions. We'll go to A, Counselor Farmer.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of a resolution of Greenville County Council opposing annexation by the City of Travelers Rest to build a hotel on Paris Mountain.
Thank you, Counselor Farmer. Any discussion on the motion?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for the speakers on this. It showed a broad range, which was one of the most impressive parts, the broad range of opposition to this. And the biggest thing I've heard against the resolution is, well, it might not have teeth, but as Ms. Poole stated out, it does a lot, and I think it's nice for council to get ahead and to say, this is how we feel about it collectively. And we are absolutely entitled to put our opinion out there ahead of time. So I'm strongly in favor of it. I hope you'll vote in favor of it also.
Thank you, Doctor Shaw. Anybody else? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, Your Honor. Roll call. Roll call, Mr. Chairman. That's how I get to...
We'll proceed with a roll call. I have been called worse.
You got a promotion there.
Next item is Item B. I think the applause was for Item A. We'll go to Item B, Counselor Collins.
That wasn't for Item B? No, for you. Okay. Item 8B, Project Ponderosa Octagon Industrial Park Master Lease Agreement, addition of Duke Energy Carolina LLC property, Lawrence County. I move for the adoption of the resolution to amend the certain master agreement governing the Octagon Industrial Park by and between Lawrence County, South Carolina, and Greenville County, South Carolina, dated September 1st, 2010, to enlarge the park to add certain property of Duke Energy Carolina's LLC located in Lawrence County.
Thank you, Counselor. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 8C, Counselor Collins.
Item 8C, Textile Communities Revitalization Act Certification, Conestie Mill and Dam Project. I move for adoption of a resolution to provide certification as provided by Section 126560 of the South Carolina Textiles Communities Revitalization Act for that certain property known as Lake Conestie Dam and the certain property formerly known as the Conestie Mill, all located at the corner of Conestie Road and Spankell Drive, Greenville, South Carolina.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 8D, Counselor Collins.
Item 8D, Mr. Chairman, Abandoned Building Site Certification, Garlandon LLC. I move for the adoption of a resolution to provide a certification pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act for the property located at 335 and 350 Tanner Price Way, Greenville, South Carolina.
Thank you, Counselor. Any discussion on the motion?
Chairman, does this have any tax implications that we're not aware of? Are there any benefits that are going to go to the property owner by having this classification versus developing the property or asking for a rezoning? Who can answer that question?
I can answer a little bit of it, but I believe they have a representative here too, if you would like to hear from that person.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from that person. I mean, this...
Sure. Is the representative available that come up and answer this question for us?
I guess if I could restate my question, Mr. Chairman. Basically, what advantage are you gaining and how is this benefiting the county?
The county benefits by replacing a blighted area with, which is abandoned, has been abandoned for probably over 10 years. That particular thing was a freight storage terminal and has been empty since 2012. So now you will be replacing it with something that has taxable value. The resolution you are approving grants the developers some income tax credits, South Carolina income tax credits, which helps them get some capital to complete the project. There are going to be industrial spec buildings built on this property, so the county will benefit by having additional tax value and new businesses in this location. So it has no other side effect on the county other than increasing tax value for the property.
Thank you so much.
And I'm Richard Few with Parker Poe. For the record, I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Thank you very much. Any additional discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Move on to Item 8E, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 8E, Project Firehouse Inducement Resolution. I move for the adoption of a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Project Firehouse, whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute a fee in lieu of tax agreement with respect to a project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes and providing for related matters.
Thank you, Counselor. Any discussion on the item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. To Item 8F, Counselor Bradley.
Amendment to the Greenville County Citizens Academy Resolution. On behalf of the committee, I move to adopt a resolution to amend Section 8 NC, a resolution number 1947, establishing the Greenville County Citizen Academy to update the Academy's appointments and responsibilities.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next, we'll move on to ordinances at third reading. We'll go with CZ-001, Counselor Bradley.
Yes, Ordnance CZ-2025-001, properties located on Merle Road, requesting rezoning from R, MHP to S1. I move to adopt ordinance at third reading.
Thank you very much. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. CZ-002, Counselor Bradley.
CZ-2025-002, property located at 2185 and 2185A Killersville Road, requesting rezoning RS to AG. I move adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ-004, Counselor Bradley.
Again, CZ-2025-004, property located at 20 Ree Wesley Court, requesting rezoning from R-R3 to R-R1. I move adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Final one here, CZ-008, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CZ-2025-008, property located at 701 Easy Bridge Road, A Street, B Street, Len Street Street, 2nd Avenue, 3rd Avenue, 5th Street, 6th Street, and Newburg Street, requesting rezoning from PD and unzoned to PD, major change. I move adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor McGahey.
Have these recommendations and conclusions, have they been adopted by the developer, and are we promised that they're going to follow them? I just, I haven't seen that anywhere. I'm not trying to throw a landmine on this. I just want to make sure that they, that the developer, that we have these recommendations that the planning commission has in fact agreed to that, and that the developer has in fact agreed to that, because if we're going to make, put this through tonight and they haven't agreed to it, they're going to go out there and do whatever they want.
I believe, I could be corrected if I'm wrong, but I believe these were accepted as changes and amendments in committee.
That's correct. It's a requirement.
Right.
Just making sure.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Move on to Section B, 9B, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Park Agreement Amendment. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 9B, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial and Business Park Agreement Amendment, 2010, Project Red Fox. I move for adoption at third reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park and to add certain parcels in Anderson County.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, move to 10A, ordinances at second reading, requirement to broadcast to the public, all county council and standing committee meetings. Counselor Farmer.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the ordinance to reflect the changes as outlined in the redlined versions that was included in the council-agended packet.
Thank you. Just to be clear for the records, I know what I'm doing, we are making two motions on this to amend?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Thank you, Mr. Farmer. All in favor of...
Mr. Chairman, may I offer an amendment at this time?
Yes.
I'd like to offer an amendment that we make it five days versus 30.
All right. Any discussion on the motion?
Well, I would say this is, it's, I hate to tell everybody in here, but it's 2025. Like, my kids post to YouTube every day. There's no reason the county can't put a video that we have within an hour after the meeting. So I think 30 days is absurd. I would like to see five or less.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to that.
Counselor Farmer.
We have been doing it within five days traditionally. So the 30 days is just kind of like a huge lead time, just in case there was something wrong, but we typically have it up. I can't think of a single instance where we haven't had it up in five days. So, you know, Mr. Mahalik's doing a really good job with that.
Well, that being said, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel McGahey.
That being said, let's, let's, let's put that into writing and then if there's an extenuating circumstance, we can know of it. But I think just holding everybody in the bureaucracy accountable is good here.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're right. Mr. McGahey, I just, you know, we got to treat our troops right. That's what I'm getting at. It's just like, hey, we, we have been doing the right thing, so I have no problem with what you're suggesting at all. I just got to say, you know, you got to vouch for you guys.
Mr. Chairman.
I suggest somehow an amendment to find some common ground there between the two?
Oh, no, I'll skip with this.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think our staff does a wonderful job. I just think 30 days is, is kind of unreal.
Any other discussion? Dr. Fant.
Out of respect for the staff and anything that happened, I understand the desire to get it out to the public as expeditionsless possible. Can we find common ground as like 10 days? In that way, that'll allow, if something goes wrong, you still got your window and you don't have to notify everybody and explain or... Just go from 30 to 10 versus the five.
McGahey.
Mr. Chairman, people are watching this live right now. You could record it in your own house. So, I mean, unless, I mean, to me, it's, it's a nonstarter. If there is an issue that's so big or so pressing that you can't get the video out within five days, I, I would like to have one example, I would like someone to present me one example where that would happen.
I'll present an example. We could have tornadoes, devastating storms, we could have hurricanes. There are a lot of things that can go wrong. Staff can get sick, staff can be on vacation, get stranded somewhere, can't get back. You know, I, I really appreciate what everybody's trying to do to make us more efficient and stuff, but sometimes we can go overboard and put restrictions on things that really don't make sense and don't do us any good. If it's 30 days and they do it in five days, then they're doing it within 30 days. So what's the difference? Why do you want to saddle them with trying to do something that's not necessary? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Sammon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I offer a friendly amendment to the five days? Could we add the words "business" in there?
Absolutely. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Counsel McGahey.
We can, we can whack things forever, but as a county council, if we, you know, if we plan for every thousand-year hurricane and write our ordinances according to that, we're going to be lost in the sauce. So I'm not, I'm not trying to restrain our staff. I'm trying to say that in today's world, in today's technology world, if we had a hurricane again that we just came through last year and knocked out electric to the county building for five business days, that's an extenuating circumstance I can live with. But in the normal reality of what we live in every day in the technology world we live in, I don't think five, I think five days is even too much personally, but I'm willing to, happy to five business days.
Thank you.
Counsel Mitchell.
Counselor McGahey, you asked for some examples. I gave you some examples. That's all that was. Thank you.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I say we have Mr. Mahalik, see if he can do it. So come on up to his stand, Mr. Mahalik. Is, is this feasible? Like, you, I mean, is he here?
He's in there, he's on the other side. Mr. Mahalik, thank you for joining us. Just wanted to get verification about this motion before we take action on it.
Business days helps just in case there, there's something that happens, but normally we flip it within 48 hours because it does take, we do have to download it into our system and sometimes if there's a longer meeting, that takes a certain amount of time to get it downloaded, make sure it's, you know, it's, it's recorded properly and then to upload it. So there is a little timing in there, usually about 24 hours, but five business days should be more than fine to take care of it.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, shame on us as a council if we're one deep in any of our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mahalik.
But, but point of information, well...
Dr. Shaw.
And it might not be a Mr. Mahalik question, it might be a clerk question. Just for everybody's information, aren't there audio recordings ready very quickly? Is that something or is that, does that have to be FOIA'd by the public or... Okay. So how, about how quick does the audio come out?
That's, that's you.
Is that...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shaw, we usually have those within about 24 to 48 hours.
Okay. So within 24, 48 hours, if somebody wanted the audio, they could hear what was said. The video is, what we're talking about here is a little longer. So, okay, that's, that was just my question. Thank you, Clerk and Mr. Mahalik.
Anybody else?
Motion to vote on the amendment to the amendment.
All right. Everybody understand the motion? And we are discussing the business days in addition to that. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.
Make a motion to vote on the amendment.
All in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The ayes have it?
Mr. Chairman, just clarification, actually, do we need to vote? So we had to, we voted on the five-day one, we actually had to vote on the other amendments and then the amendment, so one more.
Correct. That's what I meant, but it came out wrong, but thank you.
So we need to correct that.
The amendment, amendment.
All right. You want to make that motion again?
Okay. Make a motion to vote on the amendment as amended for the amendment.
All in favor of something I'm not going to repeat again, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Motion to vote on the ordinance as amended.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
No. The ayes have it. On to ordinances at first reading. Firehouse 11A, Counselor Collins.
Chairman. Item 11A, Project Firehouse Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement. I present for first reading an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county at this time as Project Firehouse with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in fee or in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto.
Thank you, Counselor, and that item will stay on the council floor. We'll go to Item 11B, Greenville County Land Development Regulations Amendments, Counselor Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As noticed on the county council agenda, I would like to present for first reading an ordinance to amend Section 15102 of the Greenville County Land Development Regulations concerning additional citizen input and eliminating staff recommendations on approvals at the planning commission. I request this ordinance be referred to the Planning and Development Committee. And if I have just a second for any comments, I was just going to say this, part, the crux of this is allowing more public input, giving the public more time in development decisions, and adding more fairness to the process.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw, and we'll refer that to the Planning and Development Committee. Is committee reports, and we will go with committee of the whole. Aye, Citizens Academy Appointments, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to appoint all 22 applicants to the 2025 Greenville County Citizens Academy.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick, just for, for the people that weren't able to come, there's two more spots available, so if there's people out there that want to do it, please let us know. We don't want to just let those spots go empty.
Let me just verify too. I know that we had the application period open, and do we still have those two available? So can we accept those under our rules or does that, would we need to fix that?
That's totally up to y'all. Normally, y'all approve it. We're having our first class, and this is my administrator's report, so I'll go on and give it to you right now.
All right.
Citizens Academy starts next Tuesday. We have 22 citizens who will participate in an eight-session program where they will meet with staff, elected and appointed officials toward county facilities, including the Detention Center, Law Enforcement Center, Animal Care, Twin Chimneys, Family Court, and the Sheriff's Training Center. We had a great inaugural season, our class, last year, and we are very excited to see the growth of the program this year. We can handle two more if you get them to us, if council's fine with that. But y'all are the ones that put the resolution in place, so...
All right. If, if nothing else, perhaps if we find those other two applicants, we could still vote to approve them at the next meeting.
If you let us know though, because we do have printed materials with names and all that to hand out to them, and it'd be helpful if we were aware of it before Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. All in favor of, oh, yeah, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item A2, the Unified Development Ordinance.
There is no action.
Right. There's no action, there's no action for the items. Just wanted to acknowledge it since it was on the agenda. Next is Greenville County Council Rules Amendments. A, Employment and Discharge of Council Employees.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the committee, I move to approve the Greenville County Council's rule that's amended in the county, in the committee of the whole.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Roll calls.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight in favor, four in opposition.
Thank you. The item passes. Item 3B, there was no action taken. So we will now move to Agenda Number 13, Public Comments. We have three speakers tonight. This is our new section that we've added back to our county council so we can hear more from the public on any items that you would like for us to hear for, to hear about in, in the county. So we'll start with Mr. Ed Paxton, and his topic is Commissioner Nominations. Welcome, Mr. Paxton.
I'm Ed Paxton. My mailing address is One York Circle, 29605. And I've been following the actions of Greenville County Council for years as they relate to the nominees to be appointed to the Greater Greenville Sanitation Commission. And I dare say 90% of the nominees have brought no meaningful experience to that table when they're first appointed. And I don't believe much in on-the-job training in government. And currently, there are five people are collectively spending in excess of $22 million of the taxpayers' money each year, and that commission answers to nobody. Members of council, we the people have bought and paid for better. I recommend you direct the administrator to develop a job description for these commissioners whose job, for this, these commissioners' jobs, and direct the administrator to publish it for the public to see. And you, and he calls the administrator to advertise the position and application, be bid, receive bids for the job in writing from applicants setting out their skills, experience, and the price for serving as a commissioner. This is not an unheard-of thing in government. If federal aviation today has their employees bidding for assignments and is working for them, I think anything we do along these lines, different from what we've been doing, will be an improvement, particularly in that so little value has been received from people who have been nominated simply for political standing.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton. Next up, we have Mr. David Davis, and his topic is the Legislative Bill, Greater Greenville Sanitation. Welcome, Mr. Davis.
Hello, my name's David Davis. I live at 112 River View Drive, Greenville, South Carolina. I want to talk to you about House Bill 4003 that's in the state legislature right now. It concerns a lot of things with Greater Greenville Sanitation, but the, the major one is millage. And, and, uh, and I just feel that the millage is just so unfair in the bus, in, in, in our business today, in their business today. The House voted last week 110 to 0 to pass this bill. It's now in the Senate, and hopefully it's going to get heard of this week or next week. And I just, I just want you all to be, understand where this millage comes from, you know. I, I pay a little over $300 for my, Greater Greenville to pick up my garbage every, every, every year, and I don't think that's bad. But because of the millage, I got friends in Shanticleer, one of them pays a little over $600 a year, another one in Shanticleer pays close to $1,200 a year. And it's all based on the millage, price of the house, price of where they live. It doesn't stop there. It goes into condos. There's a, there's a condo that's paying $28,000 in millage and then $24,000, $24,000 in sanitation fees, $52,000 to have their garbage picked up, where private enterprise would do this for just a little over half that kind of money. So I just, I just think, uh, in a lot of ways, we're being held hostage by this millage and do not have freedom to choose a provider because we're in, we're in the districts. This creates monopoly for Greater Greenville Sanitation and subjects customers to unfair business practices. Customers with higher property values pay a disappropriate amount of money, and this, this is just too much overcharge. And, um... Greater Greenville's physical year ends at the end of Ju, uh, end of June, and at the end of June, they had cash on hand, $9,919,959. That's cash on hand at the end of the year. When you all, in December, passed the bond issue for $20 million, I wasn't very happy with that myself. And then in the January Commissioners Meeting, the Commissioners were asked by the Director to approve another $3 million so he could buy equipment. Nothing was discussed, what kind of equipment? No Commissioner had any question about the equipment, and it passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right. Last but never ever least, we have Ms. Audrey Pazin, and her topic is Appointments to Planning Commission.
Thank you for this opportunity. I love this comment section. It's so perfect because what I'm about to tell you is very timely to what you're going to do, but it may never be on an agenda. And it is about who you appoint to your planning commission. Nominations are open and you will have three slots to fill. What is extraordinary to... are open, and you will have three slots to fill. What is extraordinary to me, because I save emails back from whenever, is that eighteen years ago, in March, my husband, who's a nice, quiet guy, you've heard him a little bit, he presented at a meeting and also wrote to Tony Tratt about the composition of the planning commission and the situation then, as it is today, is that fifty-six percent of the members were in the real estate business. You know, if you have people who are in the real estate business, who are developers, who are in alignment with those services, sitting on that commission, you're going to get more of what you've been getting in Greenville. And this new council body is different than the old guard. The old guards like that. That's why they pick commissioners with those areas of expertise. The application that you have online for the upcoming commissioners has those same professions indicated. You're going to garner people in those industries, and it is a big mistake, in my opinion, not to consider expertise from other areas and professions. I'm thinking back to the nineteen eighties, when I was living in the good part of New York, Brooklyn and Queens. We had a terrific mayor named Rudy Giuliani. He realized something that social scientists were learning at the time, which is that broken windows created crime. What does this mean? Conditions on the ground affect the way we live. They affect families. In Greenville now, families are sitting in traffic more than they want to. They affect crime. We have communities that are congested. Kids may not have enough basketball courts. Things are happening on the ground. That must be considered. And those considerations are not in the domain of realtors. They like inventory to sell. But a police officer or someone in law enforcement understands circumstances on the ground. You need a person like that on this commission to tell you about the experience on the ground. And I will tell you that state law, which I sent you a little up early today, tells you that the membership should express and be representative of the wide interests and concerns of the whole jurisdiction. Not everybody's interested in real estate. Some people want to have safe communities where kids don't commit suicide. They will contribute something else to what the planning commission does. The commission is supposed to develop programs, and give me ten extra seconds to read this to you, please. Programs and plans must be designed to promote public health, safety, morals, convenience, prosperity, or the general welfare and efficiency and economy of the jurisdiction. Morality, safety, and health. People in other professions bring that wisdom to the party. I hope you will change the preferences for people who are in real estate. Thanks for giving me that extra time with that, Abiba.
Thank you, Ms. Pazin. All right. I think we've covered the next agenda item. Unless the administrator wants to give another report?
Yeah, I just wanted to add about the debris pickup. We are starting to wind that down pretty rapidly now. Roads are getting closed out. We have maps and all that. GPS attracts all the trucks and all that. But we are starting to run into an issue where with spring coming on, individuals are starting to clean up their yards and trim their bushes and trees, and they're putting it out on the curb, expecting it to be picked up with the storm debris. We cannot do that. FEMA has inspectors out here all the time. So anything was, if it's green debris, we will not pick it up. It will not, it's not going to be green from the hurricane still. So just so you know, and when you get calls why we're not picking it up, that's the reason. We cannot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have requests and motions by council members, and I know this is the section that I discussed. We were going to try to open up for council to share anything with the public they would like, but we didn't really orchestrate it. So I don't know how to institute it. If anybody has anything district-wise or county-wise they'd like to share, this would be a good opportunity to do so.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Seaman.
Just really quickly, I had the opportunity this week to attend the grand reopening of the senior center in Malden, and just, I'm so grateful that we've got those kind of amenities for folks in the various municipalities and throughout the county for just continued, you know, thriving for for our seniors. And I'd also like to point out one of our own. Hisha Gamble was a panel member, speaker today at a women's conference, and she did a fabulous job representing the county, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor McGee.
I worked with the county administrator here. I'm not going to steal his thunder, but there were some concerns about the electric chargers. But I know that, I mentioned that to county administrator. We've been talking about it for about three weeks now, and he actually has found a private company that's going to pay that through the end of June, and then will work on either, and correct me if I'm wrong, administrator, but we're going to either work on getting someone else to take that on for the next year, or finding a company to come in and privately handle that. So thank you for all your work on that. I very much appreciate it.
I did have, oh, go.
You go ahead, Ms. Shaw.
I got it. Okay. Thank, thank you, Dr. Farmer. The, I, well, I had the, your honors, so I had to do that. Okay. First of all, I want to thank Diane Vreeland for this. She she gave us a, she's here usually speaking. She gave us an excellent update on public opinion. Very much appreciated the work you do all the time. Then, all the people for Paris Mountain, especially council, for voting unanimously to to stand against this particular proposal. And last, I, I want to thank Hisha, Ms. Gamble, also, because anytime I've called about debris pickup on our county roads, I mean, instantly, they go out there and fix it. So thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it, Ms. Gamble.
I want a second there, Hisha. Do you hear me?
I don't think she can hear you.
Hisha, I want a second there.
Oh. One second's that. Counselor Farmer?
I just got to give a quick shout out to one of my constituents, Toni Clark. She runs a charity organization called Defenders for Children, and they have sold out their event. They are, last I saw, they were doing it at Judsonville, but I think they had to move it to an even larger venue. The, the Defenders for Children, what they do is they raise money for sheriff's offices to get dogs that detect for electronic devices, typically devices that have like child pornography and other child abuse stuff. So she's just honestly one of the greatest people I've met along this journey. And so I just want to give a quick shout out to her, you know, her, her service to our community and our nation is just incredible. So we got some really good people in District Twenty-two, and so just want to give a shout out to her.
I have something.
Counselor Long?
Yes. I just want to give a shout out to all the first responders that responded to a house fire that was a total loss in my district, District Eighteen, in the Greer-Taylors area last week. Unfortunately, we had a family, the Rotinsky family, that house burned to the ground. And honestly, our first responders couldn't have done anything more than they did. They were there tirelessly. It was more than one fire district. It was four or five fire districts that came to the aid, and also our sheriff's department. And I just want to, number one, say what a great community we live in. And if you see a fireman or a or a police officer or sheriff this week, y'all give him a hug and tell him thank you.
Chairman, I would like to say one quick thing. On the Public Safety Committee, we have scheduled a trip to go to Charleston and visit the Consolidated Dispatch Center. And I have EMTs, fire chiefs, and a couple of law enforcements from different municipalities. And I invited Fox Twenty-One. But we're going to go down there and kind of look at it and review it and see what we can implement up here in Greenville County. I'm sorry, that's March twelfth.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Well, I will, I will echo the other congra, or thanks to Ms. Gamble. I can't take the credit for anybody who thinks that I helped them with their debris during Helene. It was really her. It was just that it came through me. So she's, she was very good, and I can't imagine, I have a hard enough time checking my own email, let alone the debris email. I wouldn't even want to think about what it looks like. So I will say this, just for the public to know, that if you do still see debris on the roads, it could be county, but it's very likely that it's the state. So reach out to them and and beat them up, just like you do us, and make sure they come pick it up. Thank you. With that, with that said, I'll entertain one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.